Those are usually only terminology.
That's actually, yeah.
Is this, is this the point right here? What is that?
Yes. Can that be at all?
I have to bring it back.
Okay. And I would also email it there once. I'll be emailing this one also, just so everyone knows. That's either how I just came in.
No, not tonight.
You want me to advertise?
I don't know where we are. We're doing it.
We have advertised.
But I don't know.
I would say you have to.
Just so everybody knows, we are enabling the live streaming and recording just a little bit ahead of time here.
Everybody, we're in the live.
Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, no, you just didn't say we're just going to do it. Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, but it would be, but we would have. We know. Oh, okay.
But it's okay. It's proceeding, it's proceeding.
I'm trying to put here because they said this is a new one.
Your, your audience is different.
The first one was.
But that was only that rare aspect, wasn't it? If you look at their audience, it's different than yours. It's not, you know, it's like, you have extra stuff in your, you have more stuff in your. Happens, share your sources. She missed, like, you see now, we have to keep it.
Oh, correct.
Sometimes all of it, all of it is wrong.
I don't see, I don't see any difference here, except that I've really changed. That's why I didn't change it.
Did Jamie get it out?
Yes.
I'd rather, I'd rather just do it. Yeah.
Uh, who's on the Zoom call?
Let's see. We have Mica, Mike Jaeger, Scott Holbert, Scott Robinson, Virginia, and Justin Bowers. And there's somebody, I guess Virginia's connected on the phone as well.
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, so I'm gonna open the Borough of Morrisville Borough Council meeting for Monday, June 21st, 2021. Can we please stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Virginia, can you do a roll call?
Yes, I will. Mayor Revella? Mr. Bowers?
Here.
Ms. Alahou?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Mr. Nichols had stated that due to his employment, actually being sent to a different area, he wouldn't be able to make it back to the borough in time.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Paul?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Here.
Mr. Jaeger?
Here.
Mr. Flager?
Present.
All right, okay, thank you.
I think Scott Holbert is here also.
Yes.
Oh, is he zooming?
Yes, I'm here as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you, Virginia. I just want to let the public know that prior to this meeting, we had an executive session for Personnel Matters. All right, we're gonna move on to Item 4, which is Announcements and Presentations, 4A, Public Services. I don't believe they are here tonight. Kind of disappointed with that one and. Go ahead, Virginia.
They were attending, I'm sorry, they were supposed to be attending this evening.
All right. All right, we'll have to.
This is Justin, just to point out order, I think you should probably announce that we held Executive Session two weeks ago as well for interviews.
Good point. We also had a Executive Session two weeks ago for interviews, which I'll get into in a moment. All right, moving on to 4B, we have a proclamation designating June 2021 as LBGTQ Pride Month. And I'll read the proclamation. It's whereas the month of June is historically recognized as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LBGTQ Pride Month in commemoration of the riots beginning June 28th, 1969, at the Stonewall Inn in New York City. And whereas the nation was founded on the ideals that every individual has infinite dignity and worth, and all human beings are born free and equal. And whereas LBGTQ individuals have had immeasurable impact on the cultural, civic, and economic success of our country. And whereas structural inequities and discrimination continue to oppress the LBGT community, WGTQ community, excuse me, and particularly the LBD, LB, LGBTQ people of color. And whereas the Borough of Morrisville is committed to supporting visibility and dignity and equity of LBT, LBTQ living in, working in our community. And whereas celebration of the Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for the LGBTQ community. And is in an equal opportunity to engage in dialogue that builds acceptance, advances equal rights, and seeks to end social inequities. Now therefore be resolved that the Borough Council of Morrisville, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, hereby recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2021 as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ community. And proclaimed, adopted, and approved this 21st day of June 2021 in council chambers.
I have a question. It says here that you signed in and the mayor signs it, is the mayor signing his things? Because he doesn't come to meetings, so is he signing things?
Uh, it would be presented to him to sign, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, under announcements, I just wanted, we didn't, I thought we didn't need to vote on it. Oh, okay, I thought Scott said we didn't have to. Okay, um, can I have a motion for the, for the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh, let's do a roll call though. Oh, sorry, any questions from the public? It's been a long time and, and it's my first proclamation, sorry, so.
Never forget it.
And I understand why Dave stumbles over the words. Okay, um, so no comment from the public, can we do a roll call, please?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Alahou?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Okay, Mr. Paul?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Okay. Proclamation passes, thank you, everyone. All right, uh, under announcements, I guess I'll announce at this point that, as I just said before, we had an Executive Session two weeks ago doing interviews. There's been, I believe, two rounds of interviews and then some initial review of resumes and stuff like that, but I'd like to announce to the public that we have a tentative agreement for the, for an individual for the position of Borough Manager. No more detailing, that's enough? No, it's fine. As soon as we have a contract and a signed contract, we'll provide more information.
We're looking for August, right, for her, that person to start?
Yes.
Just letting the public know.
Yeah, she had, she needed 30 days for her current employer.
She's also undergoing a standard background check.
Yes. Okay, uh, we'll move on to Item 5, Public Comment. So right, yeah, oh yeah, sign it for, oh, you signed it?
I signed it, I didn't want.
Did you need to, did you wish to speak?
Yes.
Okay, just fill it out for the record, that's all.
Yes, sorry, I was not aware of that, thank you.
There you go.
Oh, thank you. Just state your name and address and we'll be a little.
Nice to see people here and to be here with you. Okay, John? Okay. Jane Berger, 90 West Bagel Avenue, Morrisville. Exciting news, I know it's been a difficult time, but to hear that we will have a manager very soon is, is really great news. Because I know you all are anxious for that. Couple of things, there's a motion to approve the increase in the TAN fund, which is great, after all those years, it probably needs more money. I was just wondering where those additional funds were coming from? Because the original TAN was set up only with the proceeds from the sale of the Annex Building, which houses the County District Court. So I was just wondering, I'm glad you got the money to increase, I was just curious as to where it was coming from. Also, you're wearing my hat as Secretary for the Morrisville Business Association. And as I mentioned briefly last month, we are planning to bring the car show back to Bridge Street in September. And with all the fluffy and all the things that are doing with, I think the motion was overlooked for tonight's agenda. I did provide the Council President with a copy of a motion, that's for your consideration. And also from the minutes from 2019 and 2020. I think each time that's come up, it's been added at last minute after the other agenda was, was printed out. So I would look forward to the Borough's support of this event. You're not a co-sponsored, you're not financially committed, as you were not before, the NBA will assume all costs. But because it is a development and closure of a state highway in Morrisville, it is important to know that you support us doing this event, so thank you very much.
May I ask what the date is?
Certainly, September 18th, which is Saturday and the rain date, is September 19th.
Which is the date of the Jazz Fest.
And, what time is your Jazz Festival, because we're in the morning?
Oh, it will be the evening.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good lean to keep people in town.
Right, it's called, let's call it cross-marketing.
There you go.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. I was gonna make an announcement at the end, but I'd like to say it now since you're here, I'd like to say thank you to the Business Association for providing the beautiful bouquet down at the Robert Morris Plaza, just in time for the parade, for the.
Thank you, we'll do that, and we're hoping to do something for fall and then again for the December holidays.
Thank you.
So it's something that, that we can do to help, I appreciate your support and acknowledgement, thank you very much, Mrs. Sherlock. The, the car show is from 9:00 to 1:30, but the hour is from 8:00 to 9:00 because they need an hour for everybody to come in and get registered. So we figure they'll come see the car show and the segue over to the park for the jazz concert.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. And we usually have a table down there for nonprofits or any of our business organizations to put anything out, I'll send more information on that, but we'll certainly be glad to have something done on Bridge Street about the Jazz Fest.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, um, so we're gonna add that as Item 9I. So just so if anybody wants to make a comment about that during public comment. I don't have the sheet in front of me, but you're next, yes. Just state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Yeah, sure. Nice to see you all in person, my name is Joshua Kuntz, I live right over there, 40th, 40 Union Street, Apartment 3. I haven't been around in a couple of months, just because it's been a couple of tough. First off, a kind of like tangent from like what I actually want to speak about. I was on the, the path in dividing the river from the park this morning, and there was like a turtle up there, and it was like hilarious, I was seeing several runners and they're all like, how did turtle get up here? And so I was like following it around, make sure I was like safe and stuff, and apparently there's like a part of the roadway that's a little bit smoothed over and it found a way to crawl up from the river. It's like very impressive turtle, so good for the little guy.
Is that a duck or a canal?
Uh, the duck, yeah, 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 although, I mean, the canal is obviously like full of lovely turtles, especially further north and stuff.
I walk the duck and I see turtles in the river.
It is, it is weird to think that they got that high. My, my girlfriend ran to go get a box because she was certain that it wasn't supposed to be there. And I was like, okay, I'll stay by and just like watching it like crawl around and it'll find its way back down, which is great. The second part I'd like to kind of talk about more seriously, which is both, I've spoken to the council before via Zoom, or whatever the medium was, I believe, a Zoom. Yeah, and there is a, obviously I have spoken on behalf of Concerns for the Park. I've been a part of and discussing things with the Save Williamson Park Movement. I know that there is a lot of tension around the topic. And I've sensed even in a discussion, I've called you out Ted once, and I wanted to actually formally apologize about that. I can understand that it's a very stressful job or position that any of us are in. And one of the biggest things in our society right now that most of us are suffering from in the information age is how to counter the information age and the different things that it has impact on all of us socially, emotionally, and intellectually. The, nobody's, everybody's familiar now with the ideas of social bubbles, with higher partisanship within political discourse, and that's not even to say that people actually disagree with each other, just that we aren't communicating effectively anymore. And I think, I mean, this might just be my perspective, but I do think that it is because there's like no such thing as a community on a low scale. We hear things about wars on the nation-state, we hear things about large-scale movements. And local politics, which is about people knowing each other, it's supposed to be about local communities, has been kind of lost in the volume of other things being said. And so part of the reason why I want to apologize is because though that is also the rhetoric I am hearing, though that is also the rhetoric I am hearing, that primes my mind as well. And I would imagine that all of us get into that and we're no longer paying attention to the fact that we live together and we're quite close and that we can be actually quite personal about these things. And so, you know, I might be coming at this from a perspective of like, we're losing our environment, global warming is happening, like, and here's my time, here's my space to try to do whatever little I can. And to anybody else who's like, listen, I'm just trying to see how things are panning out, there's a business guy who's looking to do this thing, and to me, I'm like, red flag, but to them, it's like, this guy looks like he's crazy. It is like, why is this being dealt with like a red flag? This isn't, this isn't the army coming in, this isn't like, you know, trying to just do something to spite these people or whatever. And so the emotionality of all of us are obviously primed by almost different worlds, different contexts, because we're all isolated, individualized, due to the miracle of capitalism and consumerism of America, not to like tip my hand a little bit, but like, we've all self-isolated, because we can. We have our own TV shows, we have our own things and tastes that we like, but what that does is it makes us in our own bubbles, and it makes it harder, and it makes it, makes every individual have to put more work into reaching out to one another. And I wanted to try to emphasize on the fact that I don't view myself as anybody's enemy. I am trying to get rid of any presumptions or, or, you know, any, any of the first impressions maybe people, well, people have had about me that might then make it harder for them to hear where I am coming from in a lot of these things, and how much I do care about all these different things, right? That they won't be seeing me as an enemy anymore, but it's just another person in the community that is trying to vocalize things as a friend, because ultimately I do want everybody, like, that's the utopia, I want to be everybody's friend. I'm not like, I'm not trying to be a liar, I'm not trying to be inauthentic, I'm not a grifter, like, these things are, to me, philosophically unappealing, they're not the wise way, and, but, you know, the wise way is more work.
You're over three minutes now.
Thank you.
You can finish up if you.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, so anyway, I just wanted to kind of restate that, I would like to continue, obviously, getting to know everybody here and start to try to reforge possibly a better and enforce, or not enforce, promote, there we go, promote a better dialogue about this kind of touchy and sensitive topic around Williamson Park. Because I know that even though it's a little bit in the future, and it's not, nothing's sealed now, you know, we as humans like to look into the future, and so obviously we're going to be trying to come at it with our compassion and our wisdom when we can. And so I hope that that intention and spirit of trying to open dialogue to be more communal and compassionate with everybody is heard and felt, and, and thank you for my time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna close that public comment, and we're gonna move on to Item 6, which is Approval of the Minutes. 6A, Approval of the Minutes for the Borough Council Regular Meeting of April 19th, 2021, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
Ted, this is Justin, my only comment is, why are we back to 40 pages of meeting minutes again? I thought we had agreed that these were gonna be abbreviated, especially since the videos are available online.
I couldn't answer that one myself.
I believe it's because Scott used to edit them. So when the new Borough Manager comes in, I guess.
Right, that's, we'll add it to the list of things we'll have to address with the new manager. Any other, any other comments?
Could I ask that we add what the, since the video is available, that the URL is added to these minutes? For the Borough Meeting Minutes, so that people know where to go to get, if they needed to.
Okay, that's, that's a good suggestion, we can do that. All right. Anyone else?
I would just suggest putting a website on there, because nobody's gonna actually write down a URL for each individual media, video individually.
Well, you could do a tiny URL if you wanted to, and that would be simple to do.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Whatever works, whatever is easiest to get, to get whoever's trying to get to the actual video, we'll do that on the minutes. All right, uh, anyone else and then? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Extensions, motion passes. 6B, Approval of the Minutes for the Borough Council Regular Meeting of May 17th, 2021.
I don't think we have them, do we?
I don't know what's on here.
We, we never got them.
Kenya?
I didn't.
You haven't gotten the May ones?
Not the.
All right, let me double check in the folder, okay. Let me double check in the folder, we thought that they had gone out, but I'll double check.
So they'll have to wait anyway.
Yes, if you haven't received them, certainly, yes, we could, I could put those on the July agenda.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to withdraw the motion for 6B until July. All right, moving on to 7, Finance, 7A, the Treasurer's Report, everyone should have gotten that in their packets. 7B, Call for a Motion to Approve the Bill List, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? All right.
Actually, I do have a question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And Wade's not here, this is for Gilmore. I was just curious as to, excuse me, what exactly is being done with regards to flood protection grant? I mean, that bill this month was $50,000, $51,000. And each month, it's, I mean, that's twice as much as it normally is, but what, what exactly, if we could get a more detail about what's happening in the future, please?
All right, we'll actually ask for an update from the, from the engineer.
Thank you.
I'll ask the Borough Manager to go ahead and request that. Anyone else? All right, roll call, please, Virginia?
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Alahou?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Motion passes, 7-0. All right, we're gonna move on to Reports, 8A is the Mayor's Report. The Mayor's not present, so we'll move on to 8B, Police Chief's Report. Chief?
Okay, a few subjects this month, right after our last meeting, we had a shooting down on Harrison Street. That was a, more of a boyfriend-girlfriend shooting, so it was all, everybody was all connected. We made that apprehension very quickly, of the male. He is still in jail, and he is in jail on no bail. There was another bad crime that people have seen, that we had a rape, that was also a known doer. There was no danger to the public whatsoever. Our lounges, I hate to say it, have been quiet. And, but they have been quiet the last few weekends, we've been paying a lot of attention to them. New crime that's out there are catalytic converters. Not a whole lot we can do about it right now, but it is something that has spread nationwide. But in the last week, we've had two older model Big Ford vans stolen out of driveways, driven around the corner, and it cut the catalytic converter off there. Catalytic converters are worth more than most of these vehicles were. So we are keeping an eye, we've, we've worked with Falls and Telly Town, we've locked up some people, but it's just a, it's a big business right now. Our crime rate's still down 37% from last year, I'm still very happy about that. And last, I appreciate that you extended that 60-hour rule to be able to hire part-timers more. It's gonna be a long, hot summer, and I need all the help I can get, so thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, can I ask a couple of questions? Fourth of July is coming up, can you remind the public what the firework policy is and what they could face if the police apprehend them, shooting them off?
Well, it is a state law, we, I have sent emails to our Council President, he knows about the outrage of a lot of the citizens, I went out and saw some of the citizens. But the state law is that you have to be. the state law is that you have to be more than 150 yards away from any building, which is very hard in our borough to do that. So I will put it, I will put the law up on our Facebook page.
And, and if a resident is caught shooting fireworks within those 150 yards, what is the ramifications?
It's a fine through our local courts.
Okay. Good. Do you know what that amount is? Just, I'm just trying to warn residents because there's.
It's substantial. It's maybe three, four, or $500.
Okay. Because there's a lot being done, like the fireworks being shut off on Hill Street down in the manor. So a lot of residents have been complaining to me. So I just want to warn.
The problem is, is that we'll get a phone call through 911. It'll say fireworks in the area, wherever. But we get there and they're really not there. So anytime someone calls 911, I, I would like them to say, I live in such and such. Please come over to my house and I'll point out to where they are.
Okay.
We get the general vicinity and we're searching. By the time we search and we find, they're usually gone. So we're all bad. If we catch them, we're, we're fining them.
Okay. And the hotel, I know last, a couple of months ago, I had told you that the guy from that hotel, Raj, he had such a problem when the, the fireworks store is in operation for the fourth. Were you able to get in touch with him? Or do you have any?
He has never spoken to me.
Okay.
Never spoken to me.
Okay. But do we have something in place to monitor the access traffic in that fireworks store?
We've never had, this has never been discussed with either owners of those two buildings. So if there's an issue, they need to contact us and we'll work it out. But like I said, we haven't heard from them. And there hasn't been any trials over there today on my bike. There was maybe 10 cars in the quality and parking lot and 10 cars in the other lot. I know there's a couple of days if it does get crowded. But, you know, he's got to call me, you know, and, and talk to me.
Okay. Mr. Parker?
Yes.
I, I was going to bring, the chief would wait just one moment. The, I know the state law's 150 feet, but this is for the attorney. Are we able to amend our local ordinance to make it, you know, 100 feet?
It's got to be stricter, probably, not more lenient.
The, um, yeah, it's feet. I was, I was going to mention that it's feet, not, um.
Right.
Is the microphone?
Oh.
Light not be on, huh?
I'm sorry. It's been a while. Had a practice, yeah. The law is 100, I think the chief meant to say that. He knows the law. It's 150 feet.
Right.
Um, and that's the state law. So you're not going to be able to.
You can't change it.
No.
But the thing is. You can make it more stricter. You just can't make it less stricter.
I want to make it stricter.
Yeah, but.
No, you're making it more lenient if you're saying 100.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. The other, wrong direction.
I'm just saying, it's hard to shoot anything with 150 feet in this borough.
There's only a couple of places that's.
I mean, there's no, you can really legally shoot it. The problem is, the chief is correct. The problem is, and we've had this in all the townships and all the municipalities, all the burrows, they're gone by the time the police get there. And all they have is, all they find is a bunch of burnt fireworks.
Which leads me to the second thing I was going to mention, to the public that's out there. Some of them are afraid, as you probably said, they just said it's in the area or they don't exactly know. I'm encouraging people, if you know that your neighbor two doors down is doing this, please call. I mean, to pinpoint it better.
Yes.
But I know.
I think a lot of people just don't know where it's coming from. And with the.
Well, that's true.
The quality of these fireworks that are out there now, you can set something off two blocks away and it feels like it's in your living room.
Correct.
So it's really, it's a tough thing to, to point out. And it's, you know, for the people that have dogs and things like that, it's a, it's a bad night and they're, and they're setting them off at midnight.
They were off midnight last night and.
I don't understand.
People have said that they're medicating their dogs.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's both terrible.
And also the, the potential for setting a house on fire in your neighborhood. Right. Great.
Just as an aside, right?
As an aside, yes. Because we, we do have trees. So, so I'm still, I, I'm imploring the public to please, you know, help the police identify where they exactly are.
Just be a good neighbor and don't do it.
Yeah. Well, that's even better. And we haven't even gotten to the Fourth of July yet, so.
No, we haven't. All right, thank you.
Is that it, chief? Thank you. All right. Uh, moving on to eight C, a manager's report. Do you have one, Micah? Not at this time, no. Thank you. Okay. All right, we're going to move on to eight D, committee reports. Mr. Paul?
Oh, yeah, I'd like to give an update on the special Little League Committee that I'm chairing along with Mike Jaeger and Dwayne Nicole. On June 2nd, the three of us, plus Ted Parker and Micah Heights, met with Jim O'Brien, the, the president of Marsville Little League. We went over the old agreement that expired two years ago and talked about how, the terms for renewal. We exchanged some ideas. We're, we're not in complete agreement, but I think at this point, the committee working with Ted and Micah will propose a, will make a counter offer to Little League. And once we reach a consensus with Mr. O'Brien and his people over there, we'll submit a final agreement to council for approval, hopefully by the next meeting. Any questions?
Just to clarify, I, I don't believe that it, it ran out two years ago. I believe we had a three-year contract that ends, or MOU that ends this year.
Fair enough. Yeah, it was, it's, it, it at least lasted through last year, I guess. And, but, but in any case, it, it's, it's outdated and we need to renew it anyway. So we're going to work out something that will be automatically renewable, probably in the future, so we don't have this problem again. And it'll be subject to certain contingencies, such as if the development project goes forward and things like that. But in any case, we'll give you more detail once we, we work out the terms with Little League. And we obviously won't move forward without formal approval from the council.
All right. Thank you.
Yes. Can we take a question? I'm sorry.
Uh, no, from the.
Oh, sorry. All right. Does anyone else on council have a committee report?
Um, real quick, Ted, the civil service committee, we, we met two weeks ago and we're in the, starting a process of, of, looking into hiring two more police officers. We have the, the consortium was done a month ago. We have the consortium list. And so it's just a process. If anyone knows anyone that's, that's interested, that's, that recently took the consortium, have them apply at Borough Hall. The deadline to apply is June 30th. So we have another week and a half to apply for one of those positions.
Scott, will there be meeting minutes distributed to council?
Say again?
Will there be meeting minutes distributed?
Yes. Yes, there will be. We have to, we have to get the minutes put together. One of the, one of the people on the committee, Barb, is Barb Bauer. She's currently on vacation right now until the 27th. So we, we, we're kind of, we're kind of stuck right now with, that was a, you know, with, with that vacation. But we will, we'll have everything together for the, um, the July meeting.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Uh, we're going to move on to action items. Nine A, call for a motion to approve resubmitting the application in the amount of $454,823 for the Automated Red Light Enforcement Program grant through PennDOT for Pennsylvania Avenue and Philadelphia Avenue intersection. Upfront cost to reapply, $2,500 to $3,000. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
So is, this is a grant that we had applied for before when Mr. Mitchell was here and we were declined, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay. So why is it $3,000 to reapply? Do we know why? That seems a little excessive.
Wish the engineer, engineer was here to clarify, but there's, go ahead. Somebody can explain it.
Yeah, in the past, the answer has been, there are some items that need to be updated, obviously, from a date perspective. In some cases, it's a new form that needs to be filled out. So although it's, can be cut and paste for the most part, so it doesn't cost as much. And there's, sometimes there's a cost just to, just to apply. And they're just giving us a, an example of what the cost may be overall. But there's always some fee involved. I mean, just, there's always.
Yeah, it just, it just seems like it would be the same info to me. And that just seems a little high for, for that. But I don't know. Maybe the engineer can give us more data when he's providing this to us.
I agree. Maybe a breakdown. I mean, if there's a fee of 1,000, I can understand it. But if the application fee is not that high, then. And we've asked this question before, and I think that they felt that, that 250 to 3,000, or 2, 2,500 to 3,000 was actually a, a good number in their mind, which I still think is a little high. I agree with Helen.
All right. Uh, so I can add that to the questions that we want answered by the engineer.
For clarification, when the person is second, like from Zoom, could they just say who they are if it was, is that possible? Like, I'm, I'm, because I don't recognize that, I don't recognize the voice.
Virginia, were you able to make out who the individual was? I believe it was Mr. Bauer.
I, actually, I, I thought it was Mr. Jaeger, but you may be right.
We both kind of said it at the same time, but you could give it to either one of us, I'm sure.
I think as long as Virginia knows.
But I wrote down Mike Jaeger on that one.
Okay, that's fine.
It's, it's.
My feelings aren't hurt if I don't get a second.
Right.
Well, Justin, you did have two already, so we're good.
All right.
On this matter, I have a question for you, Micah. With the four grants that are on here at, you know, 2, 2,500 and $3,000 a piece, are we going to run into any cash flow issues or any issues being able to pay and afford all of them if we approve them?
No, not at this time. I think this is something that will be beneficial if we can go out and get it, to get those lights updated. And I, I think it will be a good cost, would be a good expense if, if it does come to fruition.
Yeah, hi. Can you guys hear me? This is Kurt Schroder.
Hey, Kurt.
Hi. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Sorry, sorry about.
Welcome, Kurt.
Wade being, yeah, thanks. I'm just kind of trying to multitask here. Wade had an emergency come up, but I, I heard a question. I wanted to jump in on the cost for reapplying for these grants. And I just wanted to clarify, yeah, these are estimated costs. We hope to do them for less than what we're budgeting. And the effort here is to, in the process of reapplying, we do have to go through and fill out the application, of course. But in addition, we also need to kind of verify the scope and the cost estimation. So there's a little bit of legwork and coordination that we need to do to make sure that, you know, none of the standards update from year to year for the equipment costs and stuff, like for instance, for the signals.
Makes sense.
But it's, it is a reapplication, so most of the information is there. And, and like I said, we just try to estimate what we think it'll take to do it. But whatever it takes, I think we've estimated about the same in the past and we've come in for, you know, under $2,000 in some cases.
Do you know why?
Sometimes they change the applications.
Do you, do you know why we were denied last time?
It's really just, they rank them based on merit. And, you know, sometimes when there's other applications, you know, and I hate to say it, but sometimes it's politically influenced. But there's certainly eligible applications and, you know, we'll work hard to try to push them as best we can to try to get them awarded. But we have actually had certain situations where if we don't get it on the first time, we try on the second time. And sometimes we get it on like the third or the fourth time. So it's definitely worth the continued effort.
Mr. Parker, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Yes, Kurt, what would, what are the application fees for these? Is there an application fee included in this price?
Off the top of my head, I don't know if it is any. It's a nominal amount. And usually that's something that we just front and then include in our invoicing. But if, if there is one, it's usually, you know, $150 or some nominal amount.
Thank you.
Hey, Kurt, do you know, did we increase the amount we're asking for, for any of these grants, given the current climate of the construction industry?
Yeah, I don't know the answer. Off the top of my head, Wade certainly would have. But that is the type of thing that we look at when reapplying, is making sure that we're still aiming at the right target, the best meritability.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right, Virginia, roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Alahal?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
I believe I heard you, yes, but.
Yes.
Okay.
I did, yeah, I did also. Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes seven, zero. Nine B, call for a motion to approve resubmitting the application in the amount of $200,000 for the Automated Red Light Enforcement Program grant through PennDOT for upgrades to the existing traffic signals with battery backups, generator plugs, pre.
Preemption.
All right, preemption. Uh, plugs and preemption, okay.
So moved, if that was done.
Second by Justin.
Well, you can finish reading.
No, it's upfront cost to reapply, $2,500 to $3,000. It's not actually part of the motion.
Right.
All right. So we have a, we have a, it's moved and it's second in discussion.
Are these just throughout, it doesn't say where this is. Is this just in general throughout the borough?
Kurt, you still here?
Wade told me yes.
Go ahead, go ahead, Kurt.
Yeah, they are, they are for various traffic signals. It's basically an upgrade in the computers and the hardware and like the hand-man signals to meet the current Penn dot standards.
Any other questions? Virginia, roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Alahal?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes. Motion passes seven, zero. Nine C, a call for a motion to award the contract for the Melvin Avenue Basin retrofit project to GMB Construction in the amount of $208,748, subject to availability of the grant funding. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, that was, Mr. Bowers, you second it?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
A quick discussion, I guess, for, for Kurt. Oh, or if Micah wants to jump in. I mean, this is the lowest responsible bidder, I'm assuming, which was a great price. But the range is just so, so large. So is there any explanation for why it is such a parity between the 332 versus the 208? Is it, are they a really good reputable company, I guess is my question. GMB.
Yeah, I, I don't have the information. We've worked with GMB in the past and we did call around and check their references, and they have done similar work successfully. We've, we've worked with them in other municipalities. I believe, I don't have the information. Again, I apologize in front of me. But I want to say that the second bidder was very close, which gives us some comfort. And we've also worked with that second bidder before as well. But I think the large range in cost, sometimes contractors throw pretty big numbers at projects in hopes that not other participants will bid or bid it aggressively. So I think that's just a reflection of the busyness of the industry.
Thank you. And what is the status, what's the status of all the grant funding? Because it says subject to availability. Are, are we near getting all the grants in place?
We have far more available than that.
I'm sorry?
We have far more available than the 208. I want to say we're somewhere around 350. So if something happens and it goes up, it goes up for some reason, there is more than enough to cover.
That's correct. Yeah, this is really a great story. We did get multiple grants for this project. And so, at the end of the conclusion of this project, if everything goes as it's supposed to, bear in mind, this will not only clean up a stormwater basin, it is a sort of a maintenance hog for the public works, but it'll also meet our obligation, our unfunded mandate from, really from the federal government down to the state. but it'll also meet our obligation, our unfunded mandate from, really from the federal government down to the state government, down to municipalities for the MS4 program, that's the PennDOT DE, for Pennsylvania DEA requirements. So this will be all paid for through grant funding.
All right, thank you, Kurt. Any other discussion? Virginia, roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lawal?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes, build the water park.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All right, motion passes seven zero. We're going to move on to nine D, a call for a motion to approve an increase in the TAN fund in the 2021 budget from $398,392 to $462,000, yeah, $462,000. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowers. Discussion?
Ms. Berger did ask where that extra mill is coming from. I don't know if you, if Micah can answer that.
Yes, it would be coming from the general fund. What I want to do is put the money into the TAN account, which is a separate account, while we have the tax money in there. What's been happening over the last years and before, obviously, Mr. Mitchell said this about increasing the taxes because we are utilizing the TAN fund earlier and earlier. And then this year, I actually sort of had to eat a little crow, let's say, and ask for the MMA to pay us early so we could cover costs and payroll. So the difference in the amount is the amount that basically the MMA forwarded us, which was half of what they usually give us quarterly. So what my goal here is to already have it set aside in the TAN fund and manage the other funds accordingly, knowing that this is set aside for the reason of getting through the December to April time periods.
So, Micah, in essence, this is coming out of the tax increase?
In short, yes.
Okay.
I mean, there's other things obviously going with the tax increase that is going to other places, but this is how I want to utilize a portion of it.
Got it.
But I don't recall Mr. Mitchell talking about the TAN fund as part of the tax increase. So what is not going to happen from the general fund that this is moving to the TAN fund?
No, he didn't talk about that from the tax increase. He talked about having to use it earlier and earlier and earlier.
He did, but in his analysis of what the tax increases were, I don't recall that the TAN fund was part of the mill that was going to be increased. So, so what is not going to happen because of this moving of cash?
What's now going to happen is that the reserve is going to be there, and we're going to have to manage the money accordingly over the rest of the time periods.
So in other words, if it was going for salaries and benefits to begin with, it's just going to, it's going to be held in the TAN fund until it's needed for salary and benefits.
Yes.
Well, I had asked for a cash flow analysis, and that never came our way, so it's, it's a little disturbing just to see this all of a sudden on a motion.
Well, to, in Scott Mitchell's defense, he'd been asking for some time now to increase that TAN. The amount that we've had, we've had for 20 years, just about, which we know doesn't go as far as it did 20 years ago. So, and long story short is, just asking for, and once I'll be done, one second, Scott. Just asking for more money in the TAN just goes to show you, I mean, it's just an obvious, you know, message that we need money. We're just, we come up short. So to not approve this would only put us in bigger peril. I'm done.
Go ahead, Scott.
I think the, I think the question, I think the question that Helen was asking was, what's not going to happen when this money gets moved? And in other words, there's going to be a, you know, close to a $70,000, $70,000 that's not going to be in the general fund anymore. If I budget $20 for popcorn in my house and $50 for gas for my car, and I need $70 for gas, I'm not getting popcorn anymore. So like, what aren't we getting when we move this money over? Like, I mean, if we have, if we had a $70,000 surplus, or if we're going to have one at the end of the year, then, you know, then, yeah, fine, it got moved to the TAN fund, but what, what are we, what are we taking away from? There's, you know, there's a, what is the, what is the reaction to this action to the general fund?
We're not taking money away from the general fund. We're just putting it out there, saying, okay, this is what we're putting out in reserve. When we pull from that reserve, it goes back into the general fund. It's just putting it aside and helping us managing the money.
Right.
We're not using the TAN now.
It's going to the TAN, it's getting a different interest rate, then it goes back to the general fund when we need to utilize it.
And at the end of the day, if my memory serves me properly, when I looked at last, the end of last year, December's finals, weren't we like $200,000 in a deficit? So we did deficit spending last year anyway. I don't know why people think that, that anything would change from that this year, because we've added costs. We've increased taxes, but we've added some major costs anyway. This is just a way to ensure that, that our personnel that we've hired will get paid. If other things go, go to the wayside later, they go to the wayside later, but we have to pay the people that we're hiring.
This TAN isn't utilized until, it's for next year, it's not for this year. So, I mean, maybe we budget a little bit differently in the fall and see something we could pull back on, but, you know, it can only get skinny so far.
Isn't this something then we should wait and wait till the new borough manager takes a look at this to see? I mean, is the 462 even a good number? I mean, I don't know where the 462 came from.
It's just about a mill.
I'm okay with, with it, only because it could be moved at will. There's no laws around moving it back if the new borough manager comes in. Or we will be dealing with some other things on our list that the borough, that the new borough manager should have a buy-in to. But this is one that could be fixed in a minute. It's just the ledger, it's just a ledger adjustment.
Right. And also, I can tell you that we were dangerously close to running out of money at the beginning of the year, before the tax money started to come in, so.
Sure, that's right.
All right, any other further discussion?
Yeah, this is Justin. Micah, I have another question. So budget-wise, if I look in the budget, where, where's this money coming out of to go into the TAN fund? What budget lines?
It would come out of the same, it would be coming out of the general fund. And you would see it move to the due to, to froms in the general fund, and the due to, due froms to the TAN fund.
Okay, so I guess, so is there a budget in there this year to cover that?
No, it will be going over the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we're going to be going over budget, is that what you said? Micah?
Yes.
What we did last year. By almost a quarter of a million.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing done. Virginia, roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lawal?
Yes, but in the future, I'd like the finance director to give us a little more information with this, not just a motion.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Ninety, a call for a motion approving the resolution to submit as part of the application for the DCED Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant in the amount of $250,000 to be used for the Manor Park Playground Improvement Project and to authorize the Borough Council President and interim Borough Manager to execute all necessary documents for the grant. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
I do have, if Kurt's still there, I do have a question. We did this, almost the $590,000. Now, is this looking to alleviate some of that grant that we might not?
Kurt had to hop off. He had to go to another meeting.
Oh, then maybe you know.
I just got a text from him five minutes ago. From him and Wade that they had to hop off.
All right.
So Kurt is not longer in the meeting.
Does anybody understand the question? I mean, we did one for, I think, $590,000 for Manor Park. I think it was last month. I'm sorry, I don't have that with me. But I'm just wondering if this 250, because it looks, it's coming from DCED, which different, it's a different location. So is this supposed to help alleviate that, alleviate that, that other grant? Does anybody know?
In prior conversations, I believe the DCED has zero match, correct me if I'm wrong there, and it can be used as matching funds for other grants.
Right.
So that's probably what we're doing here. I just wanted to confirm.
I believe we are.
Okay.
I don't want to be pinned down to it, but I believe, I believe Mr. Jaeger is right.
All right, thank you.
And in addition, there's no guarantee that we would get to $590,000. So if we got $200,000 of it, this would cover that too.
Right.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing done. Roll call, Virginia?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lawal?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes. Okay, motion passes seven zero. Nine F, call for a motion approving the resolution to submit as part of the application for the DCED Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant in the amount of $250,000 to be used for Patriots Park, a historic summer seat, and to authorize the Borough Council President and interim Borough Manager to execute all necessary documents for the grant. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion and a second. We have, Ms. Lawal has moved it first, and I believe Mr. Bowers was second. So we have a motion and a second. Can I have discussion, please? All right, hearing done. Roll call, Virginia?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lawal?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to nine G, a motion to approve a temporary waiver of the 60-hour limit for part-time police officers through August 31st, 2021. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paul. Discussion?
This is Justin. I have a couple comments. One, in reading this, I think there should be a start date in it, as well as the end date. I'd also like counsel, your legal counsel to maybe jump in on this question, but are there any issues with us voting on this tonight on 6/21, when a memo was sent from legal counsel to the chief on June 11th, allowing the waiver from June 8th through August 31st?
No, you're. You're ratifying it, and it was a personnel issue, police issue, also subsidy negotiations with the union. So in a sense, you're ratifying that action.
Okay.
And can we, and can we get some kind of maybe bi-weekly report showing us how many hours an officer has worked over this 60-hour limit? I don't want to get into a situation where one officer is working 100 hours. Is that possible?
I mean, it's, it's not part of the motion, but I don't know what the chief can and can't provide, but we can, we can, he's here, he's heard our request, and he can get back to us.
And just to clarify, Mr. President, so there's no confusion with the public, the 60 hours isn't weekly, that was every two weeks for part-time employees.
Correct, sir.
So what is a good hourly rate, chief? Like 60 hours, what's the maximum one officer could potentially work?
Well, when you think about it, an officer works usually.
Could you come up to the podium? Could you come up to the podium so the public can hear you?
So if you think about this, a usual officer usually works 84 hours every two weeks. So by them having, this gives every officer, every part-time officer another two shifts, if necessary. But I will manage the part-time officers, so they will be officially used like I have for the last seven years. And I'll keep them under the budget that I've been able to keep on there for years now. I will manage that.
So should we add in what the maximum they could work?
I would say no, please do not do that.
Will you provide us information?
Go ahead, Mr. Jaeger.
Thank you, sir. So just for the public's knowledge, anyone who's following along, I just want to speak my piece on this, so you understand my vote. I think it's a horrible way to treat somebody, to provide them a, a position that is the same as somebody who's getting benefits and not offer them benefits. I know this is temporary, and it's probably more than needed, but there's things we could have done previously from a part-time officer position to, to manage this that we failed to do. So that's on us as, as a council and a town, quite frankly. But at the end of the day, to victimize somebody that can't get a full-time position and work them as a full-time officer without providing them the same benefits as any full-time officer, I think is a horrible way to treat people. So I just want the public to understand why I'm voting. This isn't against the police, it's for the police.
Mr. Parker?
I just want to say something. These are generally per diem employees. They're not employees that we have that are part-time, that are regularly scheduled part-timers. These are employees who fill in shifts when they're available, right?
Correct.
So they're not on, they're not on the payroll unless they're actually working.
Correct.
Understood, but we classify them as part-time, not per diem. We've had this argument.
And I believe that's a legal, I believe that's a legal definition, that we're not able to call them per diem, but that's how they're used. Mrs. Sherlock?
I was just going to say.
Miss, Mr. Jaeger, Mrs. Sherlock has the.
I'm under the impression that the officer can work the shift or not work the shift. We're not forcing anybody to work the shift. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, and taking advantage of people doesn't always mean that they don't agree to it.
You know. Not to argue that point, sir, but the study, if you go look back at the state study, we should have 16 full-time officers. That's really the only way to solve this part-time problem. But financially, the borough cannot do that. I would love to have a full-time police department with no part-timers, but unfortunately, that's, it's a very expensive thing to do.
Yeah, and I would, and much to your same concern, I would like to have part-time officers that are actually part-time officers. So your, your point is taken, but it's just not in the same direction, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, and part of, part of the.
These part-time officers are only part-time through the summertime. And these officers all welcome being able to work that, those extra hours.
Ms. Parker, just one brief, a brief thing. When we have the 30 hours, these officers are even considering the ones we're talking about. I know our full-time officers, they work 12-hour shifts, right?
Correct.
Right. So by capping it at 30, were they getting a half a shift, or they were really only getting 24 hours?
No, it was 60 hours, so you get five 12-hour shifts.
Okay.
So that's why we're able to make that.
Just split up between two weeks.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
But part of this problem is the summertime. Go ahead, Scott.
I have a question real quick for, for the chief. Up until the end of, of August, when this, when we relax the hours, other than the absolute required training.
absolute required training, such as going to the range and, and whatnot, have you suspended any of the, any of the training? Because I know a couple of weeks ago, we had two officers that were away for, I don't know, maybe you can, I, I don't know what purpose to, it served the borough for, for the training that they're away. But if we have officers going away for training that, and I mean, other than it's absolutely required for them to keep their, keep their certs, that's, that will be suspended for the summertime? Yes, now?
Hold on. The, the training that we're, there's training in June. One of the trainings was for Justin Bickard, who was my firearms training officer, had to go to this. This is a specific training for four days reactive shooter. The other two officers that you're speaking of are going down to Atlantic City for street survival, which was scheduled back in February. But with COVID, it was postponed twice already, and that's why they're going now. There is no training. I sent every, I sent everybody the schedule. There is no training.
Right.
There is no training in July and August.
I, I, I don't want to sound cynical, and, and of course, I'm not a cop, I'm not involved in law enforcement. But, you know, I would question with the limited hours that we have right now, I don't want to sound like a smart aleck asking this question, but can you tell me what two officers going to street survival training is going to, how that is going to enrich our department on a, on a day-to-day basis? How that will make me safer as, as a, as a resident?
I will give, I will send you the course, and you can look at the course, what it, what it talks about. It talks about anything from street fighting to...
I just want you to explain it to me. I don't, I don't, I, I, I don't have time to read the course. Just tell me, is it, is, is that, is that, will that make me a safer citizen?
Is it worthwhile? Absolutely. All the training that my officers go to are his professional training that this, this conference will have 1,000 officers there. It's very much sought out by departments.
I, I understand that, but when we're short-staffed and we're like, we're like scraping the bottom of the barrel for coverage, does that, does going to that training outweigh the risks of potentially only having, you know, of not being able to cover a shift? That's what I'm getting at.
We're covering the shift. I'm working Thursday. That's one of the days the officers are training. I'm working 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I'm okay with doing that to be able to cover the streets, to be able to send them to this professional training.
Okay. But no more for July or August? Because that's...
There's no training for July and August. There's no training for July and August.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right.
So, so I'm sorry. So I had a question, though. Is there a maximum number of hours that one officer can work?
It's not in the motion, but no, it's not what we agreed to before. No, it's just to go over this...
It's not an agreement.
So we're affirming the agreement, and that's the motion before us.
Which, which was discussed with the union, is that correct?
Yes.
So we should stick to what we have.
They're in agreement, yes.
They gave a letter to counsel for, that they were in agreement of this, and it actually benefits their members to allow them to have time off this summer.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Roll call, Virginia, please.
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Alahal?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
No.
He's walking up right here. He parked for the yellow is, and he's like a foot and a half off the curb. He's going to get hit by a truck pulling out.
Scott, your, your mic is live. Scott, your mic is live.
Sorry, I have a dispute here at work. I'm sorry.
Continue, Virginia, please.
I'm sorry. Mr. Jaeger, you said no?
No.
Okay. And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Motion passes six one.
But I'd also like to add that in the future, can we get a better analysis and not just the schedule of why, why this is happening? Just a summary, who, why, maybe, maybe the thing is to look at it in the spring and, and try to hire more part-timers so that we don't have to do this again? Just, just my suggestion.
All right. We're going to move on. Do you have any comment?
Excuse me, let me address a question, please. There are no more part-timers out there. If there were, I would have hired them. We have a contract with these officers, these full-time officers, and some of them get four or five weeks off a year, plus the comp time they get from the working 12-hour shifts. They have a ton of time that they take off. And obviously, most of them want to take off in the summertime, so we have to, that's why this is such a squeeze point. We just got to get through the summer, and then we're okay again.
Didn't, didn't a part-timer or two just quit?
I had one officer, yeah, one officer just resigned, yes.
Right. So, so he needed to be replaced, and maybe we wouldn't be having to do this.
Ma'am, there's nobody out there. We are at a difficult time replacing part-time officers. They're like gold. If you remember, like Mr. Mitchell used to say, "Part-time officers are like gold. If you can get one, grab one." They're not out there. Unfortunately, if you can find them, please send them my way.
Do you want me to?
Please send them my way. They must be, they must have MPO number, they have to have Act 120, they got to be certified. They're not out there.
All right. Thank you, Chief. All right. We're going to move on to nine H, a motion to authorize the Borough Manager to readvertise the position of code enforcement officer. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Question. Is this, what, we did this in February, I think, right?
Right.
But wasn't it part-time then? This doesn't clarify one way or the other.
Well, I think it was left vague to make sure that's what we wanted to do.
Okay. All right. Just one. Thank you.
I mean, if I may?
Go ahead, sir.
Here, we expected this. So I'm, I'm a little concerned that we would hire a search firm for a borough manager that doesn't really have any specific requirements, other than we had requirements, right, for a, a specific level of, of experience and so forth. And we're going to put an ad out without using a search firm for a position that really requires certifications and trainings that none of us are really clear on. How does that work? And furthermore, why would we do this before the new borough manager gets their feet wet in the, in the office to cause more havoc for that person, to have somebody training in a new position without oversight? So I, I think we're putting the cart before the horse when we're concerned in other areas for the borough manager having input, but not concerned with them having input on the staff that they'll be managing. And again, us hiring somebody that is going to have to have very specific trainings and, and UCC knowledge that I don't think any of us possess to be able to even quiz them on, him or her, to, to hire for that position, I think, like I thought last time, it's just a really bad idea. And right now, it's even worse timing. So I'm not sure why this is even on the agenda. It seems like really bad timing, and it comes across political as, as to, as, so to speak, when, when you're looking at something that the, that the last people did, and you're just trying to undo stuff. And that's what it comes across as. The, the prior council hired this firm because we wanted somebody who is professional and knowledgeable and properly accredited. We have that. We have an individual out there doing, doing code enforcement that I've gotten nothing but positive feedback on for the past year and a half. So I, I just don't understand why the struggle has to be, we have to hire this position, other than people ran on that. So I, I get that you're trying to keep your promises, guys, but think about the borough when you're making these decisions and what the timing looks like.
All right.
Mr. Parker?
Let me, let me, I want to add something first.
This is a motion to advertise. There's no deadline on when we're going to advertise. If we're going to advertise tomorrow, next week, after the manager starts, it's just an authorization for the manager to hire. We're not placing the ad for the manager. We're not hiring a position tonight. We're authorizing the manager to place an advertisement for it. That's it.
Why?
There's no political thing behind this, other than, for as many, let me finish, sir. For as many positive things you've heard about our code enforcement with Keystone, I believe there are some members up here who have heard the opposite. So this was something that was decided to be tried before. The pool was rather small. There are other places to advertise that we've discovered while searching for a manager at little or no cost. So that was the thought behind it. So I'll let Mrs. Sherlock have the floor.
Yes. To echo some of the things you said, yes. But this, this is not fulfilling a promise. There is no political hack waiting to be, to take this position. This is a professional service that we would ask for, no different than we did with Gilmore Associates and Flagler. And I don't know that, they were interviewed, and that wasn't done through a search committee. So there are professional services out there for code and zoning, and they were, they're reputable companies that are out there. And that is the direction that I'm hoping we would take. But if you look at the analysis that we just received from our monthly report, it appears as if the, the figures are a little skewed into how much is being paid for by the public. And even in that breakdown, the public is still paying by the fines. I understand that that's the way it's set up, that the fines will take care of the, of the employee or, or the service. But it's still a little skewed, because there are a number of fines that are, or I should say, applications or fines that are higher than, I know we were told they're on par, but there are some that are higher in this community, which is a, not necessarily a wealthy community. So this is not something that was pre-planned, unless I'm in the complete dark with my fellow council people here. I don't know anything about someone who's looking for this job that we've talked to or that we're planning on hiring. So, no, so it's not sort of political move.
Thanks, Ms. Sherlock. So I guess I'm confused, because the motion is to, to readvertise for the position, not for a service. You're, you're advertising the position. So I'm, I'm confused with that answer, because that's not what we're advertising for. What we're advertising is to hire an individual, not a service. So it wouldn't be like Gilmore Associates, or Keystone, or any of the service providers that we've appointed. It would be the appointment of an individual, right?
Well, you're correct. The wording does read that way.
And I believe that's where the majority of council, when we moved and approved a motion to hire a part-time code enforcement officer, was to try to bring code back in-house, because, I don't want to speak for anybody up here, but most of us are not particularly happy with the code enforcement being handled by Keystone.
I guess that will just be reflected in the vote.
Can I, can I, can I add something, Ted?
Go ahead, sir.
Back on June 6th, I sent you a, a picture and a, a complaint from a resident that it looks like, of, like, I don't know, a jungle, for lack of a better phrase, on the 300 block of Parks Prospect. And I had another resident email me after that, and, you know, other people, you know, said, hey, what's going on with that? Was, how was that handled? Was there anything?
Yes. A code enforcement officer was sent out. They mailed citations to the listed property owner in Philadelphia, and they were waiting for the, what they refer to as the green card, which would be the registered mail signature receipt to be returned. And as of a couple of days ago, I don't believe it was received yet.
I, I went to the, I went to the house thinking that possibly it was an elderly person or somebody that just needed help, but honestly, I couldn't find my way to the front door. So it was, it's that much of a jungle. And so I couldn't, you know, because, yes, we should be doing this through the code, but if this is someone that needed help or had a legitimate reason why it was so overgrown, then it doesn't hurt to, you know, dig a little. But I couldn't, can't get to the door. Well, there's a lot of homes that, that code needs to be looking at that just, our current code, it just isn't. I mean, I see tons of homes, I bring in some addresses to the borough, neighbors come to me and complain about homes, and I don't see any changes being made. So I would just like to know with this motion, where are we going to be advertising? Because I, I believe Mr. Mitchell said when he advertised, he didn't get much response. So should we be advertising somewhere different?
Yeah, I think we were going to look, I, I don't want to speak for the administration, but I think looking at some of the places that we placed the manager's ad.
Okay. That's fine.
Some of those professional services. So just my view on this is, for me, the point at which Keystone handling code became a major issue is when they refused a request by the borough manager to come out at night to look at the Hookah Lounge. For a vendor to tell the borough manager no, at that point, I knew we needed our in-house code enforcement again. Plain and simple. And there is nobody in the wings waiting to come in, no political hack, no promises made. This would be a professional search, just like we did a professional review of resumes and that, by the borough, borough manager, whoever that may be at the time, they're all taken in, and the best person hired if there's somebody there. If there's not, then we have to, as a council, look at other options.
So I just also want to make sure, the borough manager will be the one that decides who to hire, correct? That will be left to them?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm hoping with, with us being kept in the loop, rather than...
Yes. Yeah. But this should be their decision.
It should be their decision.
Yes.
That would be their, their employee. All right. We're going to move this now. Virginia, roll call, please.
I still have a comment.
Go ahead.
I don't think you're necessarily correct on the borough manager doing this, because if, if it is, as Nancy says, a professional service, then it goes to council to appoint it.
Nancy's not correct. It's, it's a hire. It's an employee, just like the motion was before.
I stand corrected. Well, it could be either, but you're right.
No.
It's, it's reading...
No.
I mean, if it doesn't work out that we find an individual or that person, then we may have to go to a different option.
Another resolution.
This is a motion to readvertise. This is a continuation of the prior motion that the, that the borough manager was unable to find an applicant. Suitable applicant, I should say. Anything else, Justin?
Yeah, do we, I'm still not 100% sure on the direction here. I mean, is this, this position is going to cover just code enforcement? And will it cover all the qualifications in order to do UCC buildings and, and plan reviews? Or are we still going to have a third party for that? And how about a fire marshal? Were we looking for somebody else to do that, or Keystone is still doing it, or?
I think, I think, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off, but I think the last time we brought this up, the thought was, we'll see what resumes come in, and who's the best person, and what their qualifications are, and then go from there.
I think it'll be hard to get away from the third party.
I believe so, too, considering the large number of certifications.
So can, can I ask? I know the borough manager hasn't started yet, but can we just send them the ad to see if they're, they're in agreement with, with it?
Right. Right, like just what I said, the we're just authorizing the borough manager's office, for lack of a.
I know, but I'm talking about the potential borough manager. Can they at least see the ad because they are going to be hiring so that at least they could see what the ad says?
I would be comfortable once we had a signed contract.
Okay, all right.
But like I said, this actual advertisement that we don't have, we don't have any deadlines in here. This is just since we meet monthly, it's just the motion to, you know, if the manager starts in August and says, we're not going to do this right this moment, the motion is still there, authorizing the manager to place an advertisement and look for code enforcement.
So this is for the borough manager, not the interim?
It's for whoever.
Okay.
I would prefer the borough manager, yes. All right, Virginia, roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Bowers?
No.
Ms. Lajo?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
No.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes. Motion passes five to two. All right, moving on to nine I. Yes. The motion, motion to approve the Marsville Business Association request to hold a car show on Saturday, September 18th, 2021, rain date being Sunday, September 20, September 19th, 2021, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. on each East Bridge Street between Delmar and Pennsylvania Avenues, and to authorize the borough administration to submit the permit paperwork to PennDOT. And there's a note, note setup and registration is from eight to nine, car show starts at 9:00 a.m. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second, Justin.
With a motion and a second discussion.
This is Justin. My only comment is directed to the M B A. I know two years ago when they did this, they had a good showing, and I had some comments after it, and I think since this was, I didn't look into my what I previously said, but I think it was something along the lines of, the next time they do it, I hope that they have some better signage and advanced signage for the road closing, just to keep the traffic moving a little better. Other than that, I look forward to having it.
All right, what the response was, we'll do. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes seven zero. All right, we have an appointment that's not listed as an action item, but it could be nine J. We're appointing, we're looking to appoint for two open positions on the Environmental Advisory Council. One position has seven months remaining of a three-year term, which expires on January 22nd, 2022, and one position with 18 months remaining of a three-year term, which expires on 12/19/2022. We do have.
I would like to nominate Elaine Hanley for the position that expires 12/19/2022.
We have a nomination for one of the positions. Which one, for the?
She's been Elaine has been an associate member of the the MEAC for seven years now. I think she's very well-versed in it, interested, and I think she'd be a fine candidate.
I agree with you. I've I've been shadowing the the council as a as a as council president, and I agree with you. She's she's been on there for many years, and she's an asset to the to the council. Do you have any any other nominations for that for the one term with 18 months remaining?
Did we receive any letter of interest from her?
Yes, we did. It was.
Just today, Justin.
It was just it sent Virginia, I believe, emailed it.
Yes, I did. I did. We just received it today.
Got it in that in the last email, Justin, like around 7:00 o'clock. It was in it was in with the with the proclamation that we had earlier tonight also.
Didn't even know we got an email.
All right, do we have any other nominations for this position?
I don't recall getting any other letters of interest. Did we get any?
It's been advertised for a little while now, too. So we'll only be filling the one position tonight since we don't. I'm sorry, Virginia, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's all right. No, I just wanted to say Helen is correct. That was the only one that we did receive.
Right. So there are two positions open, and we're only able to fill one because I'd rather not fill something without at least having a letter from someone. So hearing no other nominations, can we have a roll call to appoint Ms. Henley to the Environmental Advisory Council for the one position with 18 months remaining of a three-year term expiring on 12/19/2022?
Yes.
Virginia, go ahead, Virginia.
Mr. Bowers?
No, only because I haven't seen the email yet.
Ms. Lajo?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Motion passes six one. We'll continue to advertise, and hopefully somebody will submit a letter of interest for the other position.
Do we put these out on Facebook or anything? Like, I don't know where.
On the website.
I know, but we need to do a little more, like, people don't know where to look. When I go on the website, sometimes it takes me forever to find where I need to be. Like, we have a Facebook page, correct, a Borough Facebook page?
I guess we could, you work on pinning something to the top of the page?
Yeah, because otherwise people don't know that this even exists.
Okay.
They are usually advertised on there. If they're advertised on the website, usually on Facebook, too.
I would just maybe the suggestion was to pin it, pin it so that it's constantly at the top of the page and doesn't get lost with the daily posts.
And for the old timers, it's actually on our TV.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of people don't have cable anymore.
Oh, I know.
Which I'm just, yeah, just you just mentioned cable. I see that, you know, we normally budget $100,000 for the cable, but that that the quarterly stay the same for this year, it's going to be only about $82,000. So we know that's been going down, so.
And that's something that Mr. Mitchell also warned us.
Correct. Another $20,000 loss.
Okay, we're going to move on to 10 other business, 10A zoning ordinance discussion. You want to go with that?
Without objection, we're going to, we sent around a proposed ordinance, and without objection, we'll advertise it, and you can consider it next month at your month, at next month's meeting. The reason we want to bring it up this month is because this, anyone who would want to put a hookah lounge in is now or such use would now be on would be on notice that there's a pending ordinance doctrine in Pennsylvania, and so this would apply, so they couldn't sneak in, so to speak, without, before you could pass the ordinance next month, if that's your desire.
But the two existing are grandfathered, is that correct?
You cannot, yes, they but they're obviously, we've been working with the police and with zoning and everybody else, the management here to prosecute that. We've been in court with them a number of times. We've gone out to Doylestown, so we're not, we're going to do everything we can to bring them into compliance, or they can choose to leave and go somewhere else if they can't fly here.
So in this ordinance also, it talks about nightclubs. So we do have two establishments in town that are not per se nightclubs but are acting like nightclubs. So would this ordinance pertain to them as well, or are they grandfathered in? Because they don't really have a nightclub.
Well, it, I don't, I, we, we will attempt to use this ordinance as well to, and also they may have some, they may try to claim that they that they pre-existing, but this will also prevent anything new from happening in your in the borough.
Will it address, like, BYOB clubs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
BYOB clubs or BYOB restaurants?
No, it's like nightclubs.
Nightclub.
Okay, a place that wouldn't necessarily be serving food and meals.
Right.
Okay.
Just as a point of order, do we have a motion that we're in discussion on, or where are we?
No, I was just discussing.
We're just discussing.
It's just discussion. I said, without objection, we will advertise this for your consideration next month.
Right. So if I may, since we're in discussion, so first of all, Mr. Flagler, thank you for your hard work on this. I read through it. I get it. It actually tightens some things up, and I appreciate it. But my question is more for the council. Why do we have a policy committee? Stuff like this should go through the policy committee. The policy committee should be making recommendations to council, and then council should be sending it before we spend a dime on attorney fees. Council should be looking at something like this and having input before we just decide to take action like this. I just don't understand why we even have a policy committee if we're not going to use it and use it properly to make sure that council's in the loop on on changes. I'm okay with the change. I'm not okay with the process.
Mr. Parker?
Go ahead.
Mike, I would, most of the times I would agree with what your your statement, but in this particular one, I'm not sure where a policy committee would start because of the the newness and the nuances with this particular problem. But that does bring me to something I want to discuss later about our ordinance committee. But but you're right, it's much better for the policy committee to go through things first before we spend any money, and they just have them review.
Even if it's just to say, this is an issue that we think needs to be addressed, and we'd like to go, we'd like to have it sent to an attorney for review or recommendation, then council looks at it and says, yes, this should go for recommend, we accept that recommendation. This should go for review or or additional action. We're just jumping over all of that and just sending it to the attorneys, which, again, I understand that that this is that this is a little bit of a heightened issue, but we have to react within the way we're supposed to operate, and I just don't, I don't see that we're following the 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 process that should be followed, and it's not just for this one thing. It's 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 happened many, many times with this council. The committees aren't functioning accurately or properly in most cases, and we're just jumping through, jumping past council, council committees to just act, and that's not how this is supposed to work. We're supposed to have time to deliberate and not just jump right into it. However, like I said, it's not that I'm opposed to this legislation. That's not the point. The point is, as legislators, we're just kind of telling the telling the solicitor to do our job and do it for us, rather than us as a body, or at least as a subcommittee, making a decision to move forward. We're just handing it to the administration and say, figure it out. And that's not how any of this works.
Mr. Parker?
Let me add this one thing, please.
Okay.
I'll let you go. Under normal circumstances, I would agree with you, but with COVID and not having an actual firm date of when meetings could be held again, Zoom being an issue, and the sudden appearance of clubs that seem to be popping up like warts on a frog, the best course of action was to let the professional handle this and get it done quickly, which is exactly what they did, and by getting this advertised quicker, and now, rather than a month, two, three, four, while it's discussed and discussed and discussed, we have an ordinance here that will be advertised, and we'll basically put the brakes on any potential hookah lounge, BYOB slash nightclub. Sometimes the solicitor is needed, and the council, the council committees are advisory committees. They they don't make policy, they don't make ordinances, they work through them with the solicitor. I don't expect anyone on council to be making up new policies or ordinances on their own without without the direct interaction with the solicitor and whoever that solicitor may be at that particular time. Can I, Ms. Sherlock?
No, that's all right.
I never recommended that. I said that 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 the committee should meet, discuss it, and then recommend to council to take action as opposed to just somebody arbitrarily deciding we're going to take action. That's how the process should work, to make sure that everybody's on board with it, as opposed to, and again, it's not about the legislation, it's about the process. You're making an excuse based on.
I am not making an excuse, and don't don't try to push this back as that to get your point across. The point is, wait a minute.
Because it's easier for you. Easier doesn't.
No, it's not.
Right. Easier and faster doesn't make it right.
You made your point that you wanted to make, but it just doesn't jive with what's going on. We have a solicitor spending tens of thousands of dollars of time.
At the end of the day, this thing could have grown up.
Enough is enough. Enough is enough. Enough is enough. Enough is enough. Stop it, Mr. Jaeger.
Without consulting the rest of the council.
Control yourself. Control yourself.
Taxpayer money. Stop doing that, please.
And the solicitor would had to have done it anyway because there is nobody on this council who is authorized to make a new ordinance on their own. Neither one council member or three council members or four council members.
But that's what's happening. You can't.
Point of order. Do we have a policy?
You're making those decisions.
Virginia, roll call. There is no motion. Well, yeah, what's, you know what? I'm going to make a motion. A motion to authorize the solicitor to advertise the ordinance.
So moved.
Can I have a second, please?
Is he ready for the? So moved.
How about reopening a public comment so we do it right, Mr. President?
Let's do the motion first. Do I have a second, or I'll second? It's seconded by the by myself. I'm going to open up the floor to public comment if anybody would like to make a comment.
Jane Berger, 90 West Naval Avenue. Ordinance is near and dear to my heart, as Mrs. Sherlock knows. I understand process, Mr. Jaeger, absolutely. I am actually more comfortable with the fact that rather than just having a discussion, you are doing a formal motion to authorize the solicitor to take this, because with zoning, you need to have a public hearing, and it has to go to our planning commission. So I think this more makes it more of a formal process to do, and anybody who's lives near the hookah lounge just knows that sometimes you need to have expediency, and certainly moving forward, I do agree, if you have committees, they do need to be active. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Virginia, roll call, please.
Hold on a second. What about borough comment? Official comment? I haven't had a chance to talk.
Well, because somebody else was talking over everybody, but go ahead, sir. I'll let you go. I'll entertain another round of discussion.
Okay, I have some comments and questions pertaining to both of them, since we define a hookah bar slash lounge, and we define a nightclub, and basically are trying to impose the same restrictions on both. I'm just curious why, why the, who chose the hours and why are they open, will be allowed to be open until 12:00 a.m. and not open until 11:00 a.m. in the morning? I get that they're a late-night problem, maybe, you know, should we, should they be closed earlier? Should there be debate over if they're allowed to open earlier in the morning? Just thoughts that I have reading this, since we didn't have a discussion, limited discussion. No alcoholic beverages may be consumed, may be served or consumed on the premises. If a hookah bar got a liquor license, would that supersede this? No hookah bar lounge may be located on a property that is adjacent to residential district or property. I agree with that one. No one under the age of 21 shall be permitted on the premises. I have concerns about that. Why, why is the age of 21? What's the rationale for it? I mean, people, I think people can buy cigarettes at 18 yet, and this is no different than cigarettes for the most part. Why are we upping the limit, especially if we're not allowing alcoholic beverages? As for nightclubs, it's defined as nightclub as any private or public establishment that allows people to gather for the purposes of listening to music, dancing, or other social interaction. So when I read that, does that leave us open to a very broad definition? Would that regulate something like the Solid Youth Center? Because it is, it's a center for social interaction. It may not be called a nightclub, but it falls under, I would think it might fall under the other social interaction club. Similarly, does this have any effect on the Fraternal Order of the Eagles that's in town, or the former Italian-American Club? I know it's not there anymore, but if there was another organization like that, would they fall under this?
I believe they do, it's fraternal.
And would this apply to the firehouse on a non-trading night? I know that they have like a social get-together night, and I just want to make sure that we're not having implications and other things by having such a broad definition.
If I may, Mr. President, I can answer some of these questions.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so I'll work backwards for you, Mr. Bowers. The answer is, it is a broad definition. However, you have, within the ordinance already, there's more hour, excuse me, more definitions of different types of uses that are more narrow, meaning a lot of those things you brought up are actually already covered. We looked through, you know, the ordinance's definitions that already exist, and there's enough of a differentiation within the different definitions and uses that exist that the overlap doesn't happen with the broad definition. Working back again, good from the type of the hours, we looked at surrounding municipalities, surrounding, surrounding municipalities ordinances, seeing what they did, what their hours were. We sort of took a range of those and found somewhere in the middle. If those would like to be changed, if council has different hours, that's perfectly within their purview. As for the age 21, a federal law was changed about a year or two ago. I can't remember what year it was, but the the legal age to buy cigarettes, to tobacco products, and use these hookah products is now 21. So that law was actually changed within the last couple of years. So people under the age of 21, that 18 to 21 range, can no longer buy tobacco products or.
Okay.
Hookah products.
I haven't been 21 for a while. I haven't had to worry about whether or not I need to show ID for tobacco. I need to show ID for tobacco-
Yeah, so. I spent a lot of time in Wawa.
So a nightclub is not necessarily like a bar, correct? It's a, like, back in my day, a nightclub was a, a bar.
Right.
So this is different.
Bars, right.
And remember, bars controlled by the LCB.
Okay, so this is-
If they're selling alcohol.
The regulations are right.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, this isn't about the specifics of this zoning ordinance, but I, I want to go back to the comments that Mike had made about committees and, and Ted's comments in response to that, and just generally my own experience. Because I'm, I've been on council now for about a year and a half, and I'm pretty frustrated and I'm lost on a lot of these issues. One of my questions, in fact, I was talking to several members today, is what, what is the function of our committees? I mean, we have all these committees on the, on the, on council, and I think we should use them. Um, and because of COVID and lots of other things, for whatever reason, for, as far as I know, a lot of these committees don't even meet most of the time. And when they do meet, we don't get regular reports back. Um, and it's as if they're work, they're working on a parallel universe. We need to, we need to, we need to step up the efficiency of this council. And that, and that's not just waiting until a new borough manager arrives to make everything okay. Uh, you know, we, we, we stumbled when we had Scott Mitchell, who was pretty competent. We gotta, we gotta get our act together among ourselves. This, 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 this arguing back and forth, picking, picking at each other every opportunity we get, is getting us absolutely nowhere. We're making fools of ourselves in front of the residents that we represent, as far as I'm concerned. I feel embarrassed, I hope the rest of you do too a little bit sometimes. But we need to, to use these committees, because I don't know how to get an ordinance passed. I was asking people today, because I get complaints, as do, as does everybody on this council, we get complaints from our neighbors. The last, the latest one is, is roosters crowing all night. She's laughing because he knows about it. But some, some of us have heard about this, there are at least two or three cases of these roosters that are driving people crazy. And we just throw up our hands and then we, we can't just go and draft and call Randy and Scott and tell them to draft an ordinance and slap it on everybody. We've got to go through a process. And, and if we have these committees, that seems to be, to be the most effective way to bring things through council, rather than have eight of us sitting up here pissing on each other. Bring it to the council for three or four people, they can work something up and then present, and they, and then the committee can present it to council, so council can consider it. And then if it requires outside council, if it requires the borough solicitor or, or zoning council or member, then, then we get them involved. But, but we are doing it backwards. You know, we, we hear a problem, someone complains, somebody, we call up Randy, we say, can we fix this? Oh, yeah, fine, we'll fix it. And then we bring it here as if it's a fait accompli. Of course, people are pissed off. I'm pissed off. I don't know what the hell is going on half the time. So let's start, so let's give ourselves a break. Let's, let's, let's excuse ourselves for the fact that we've gone through a pandemic that has, you know, put everybody in, 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 in strange operational mode. We haven't been face to face for months, and even now, only about, only have less made it here today. Please, I'm talking, okay?
You're right.
Um, and, and so, so I don't care whether Mike Yeager said it, or Ted Parker said it, or Nancy Sherlock says it, or Helen LaHole says it. I can't, I'm not taking positions based on who said it, and they're my friend, or they're my enemy, or on this issue, you know, I, I got pissed off at them, so I'm going to vote against them or something else. We've got to get, we've got to get past this. We've got to grow up. And we, and, and we got to start functioning like a real council, and that means using our committees, or get rid of the committees. If we decide we don't want committees, that they get in the way, then fine, let's abolish them. But don't have them listed on the, on the website and never use them. I don't even know who's on the, the policies and ordinance committee until today, I looked it up, because I don't, I don't ever hear from them, I don't, I don't know who's on it, I don't know what they've done in the past. So shame on me. But, but I'm stop, I'm putting my foot down and I'm saying, and I'm at least admitting to everybody that, 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 that we've done less than a salary job in all this. And, and I for one would like to get back on the right track. And I, and we, and we should start now, not wait for, for six or eight weeks until we have the new borough manager. We can't, we can't put everything in abeyance, all of our problems, and, and keep them juggling the air. And then when the poor new borough manager shows up, just dump it all on that person and say, okay, now fix it. Now that you're here, thank God, please fix it. We've got, we've got to start working now to, 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 to make up for some of the, the shoddy work that we've done over the last few months. And, and, and again, I'm, I'm as guilty as anybody, if not more guilty than most. So this is a plea, can, can we just act like adults and act like good citizens and give the, the citizens of Morrisville the kind of representation and attention that they deserve? And, and, and if we need to reexamine our procedures, whether we need bylaws for how council conducts itself, because we don't seem to know how to do that, or if we need bylaws on how to use committees, or if we need to, if we need to just have, 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 have a session where we just talk about process and no, and, and no substantive issues, fine, maybe we need to do that. I know that, 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 that Mr. Parker is advocating that we bring back the agenda meetings. And if we do that, maybe that's another way we can do that more. But in any case, you know, I think we should revive the committees, make committees, you know, active, living things that actually contribute to the work of this council. And, and then we use borough solicitors and outside, outside, other outside vendors more cost-effectively and at the right, at the right time. You know, I don't expect Randy Flager and Scott Hobart to, to turn us down when we ask them to do something. It's not for them to say, well, gee, you know, did you run through the committee? That's up to us. It's up to us to, and if we get complaint about anyone's bills, it's up to us to make sure that we're, we're acting in a more effective, sensible manner. So I, I, I know this is a little disjointed, but, but I'm kind of fed up with this. I admit that I can do better, and I'm going to try to do better, and I hope everybody else does too. That's all I've had to say.
I'd like to just add also to your point, Bob. The problem with some of the committees is-
There's a motion on the table, can we get voting on it? We're off on a tangent, way off on a tangent. It was nice enough to let Bob finish. Helen, I'm sorry for cutting you off, but I think we should get back to the meeting.
It's all-
I agree.
It's all, do we want to go to, do we want to go to a vote? Or, I'll just finish, finish your comment.
Well, I, just really quick, um, like, people have different ideas of what the committees are going to be, like, Yeager thinks it's one thing, I think it's another thing, somebody else thinks. I think we need to have an established two-sentence what the committee's purpose is. Because otherwise, like, is the policy committee about roosters? I don't know.
We need to agree-
Correct.
On what it is.
Exactly.
And agree to it.
Exactly.
It's not going to happen by, by, by making little entries onto the website or passing notes around. We need to actually have a conversation, look people in the eye and talk like this. We do, but this is not the place for it. This is a business meeting. This is our legislative meeting. This is where we pass things. We make motions and we pass them. That is why we need agenda meetings. They've gone away and things don't get done until the last minute and they're brought up at the meetings, or things are in the works and not everybody knows about it. The agenda meetings are not, they're workshop meetings. That's the right wording.
And we should call them workshops.
I happen to think these meetings, we should discuss- This is not the place to discuss it. Honestly, it's too early and we should, this, this, this is not the place to discuss it.
Mr. Parker.
Agenda? Go ahead, Nancy.
I'm sorry. We have to call them special meetings. We in our little circle can say workshop, but by Borough Code has to be a special meeting. I agree, um, because we've probably all felt a little bit disconnected over the past year, uh, having Zoom meetings in addition to, uh, not having the agenda meetings. So I, I, I agree with, you know, some of what Bob's saying, and I do-
One of the, I don't mean to cut you off, Nancy, one of the biggest mistakes we made was to eliminate agenda meetings.
Well, I don't know if that's-
That is an informal meeting, that is where these things come up, that is where Mr. Paul brings up the fact that there were roosters, uh, crowing from 4:00 AM through mid-morning.
Can you talk about roosters later and finish with this?
Excuse me for bringing up a real issue. I just want to, I just, I'm not making fun of it.
No.
No, I'm, I'm, I don't really appreciate that.
Well, I'm going to talk about roosters when we go on to discussion.
I don't think he was.
That is the point, and what they're brought up, so that we can say, is that something the policy committee should look at? But why do you only discuss issues at an agenda meeting? Why don't you discuss issues at a real public, at the regular- That is a public meeting. I'm trying to have, I'm- That is a public meeting.
When you go to vote on it, that's when we would discuss.
I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to do this anymore.
Okay.
People are, people are-
We've got a motion.
-misunderstanding what people are saying, and it's getting out of hand. And this is the reason why we need workshop meetings. Because we cannot come up here and have three-hour meetings to try to get all the business done in this borough in one meeting, and then somehow come out of this being nice and happy and sweet to each other, when we're voting on things that we have different views on. Workshop meetings are where we work out the differences and try to come to a consensus.
And we-
This is not the place. This is the regular meeting of Borough Council. This is our meeting where we vote on the agenda that we bring up at our workshop meeting. And that's how it's been done, and that's how it's worked. This is the only place we can discuss these things. That's right. Going to have them, I was asking for a consensus. But I don't even get, I don't even get the respect of getting a consensus. We're going to have workshop meetings starting in August. End of story. They will be on the, they will be on the calendar, show up, don't show up, don't discuss anything, I don't really care. But we're going to have workshop meetings. You wanted me to make the arbitrary decision, I've made it.
And the motion's on the table.
The motion's on the table. Virginia roll call, please.
Yes. This is going to be 9K, correct? Just to make sure.
Yes.
What was, what was the motion again?
What is the motion?
About the advertise-
To advertise the, the ordinance.
The ordinance.
It was, it was, motion was made, so it would be an action item, so it would be 9K.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. LaHole?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Yeager?
No.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Motion passed of 6-1.
I think that's a good motion to pass.
Does anybody else want to add anything to this already contentious evening? Is there anything else on the borough officials?
I have some announcements.
You can make your announcements, ma'am.
Let me start with the library, please. Library opened its doors on June 1st. They're still suggesting masks at this time, and they still have curbside service if you need it. They also, we have a pretty aggressive summer reading program that actually began today. And if you go to the website, you'll see a list of the summer programs. All of them are taking place in the park. We have the Wildlife Encounters, Ryan the Bug Man, if you're a little child, I guess all these are good. Carnival of Animals, so all bugs and animals will be down there. So you can just check that on either the website of the borough or the, with the, the library's website. I'd like to make mention that we had recently received a note from Karen Kane, who is resigning from the EAC, I'm sorry, the EDC. So that will be, I guess, we'll put that up on our Facebook and so forth. And thank you to her time and effort. And then, of course, we had another, the E, the, one of the vacancies for the EAC was Stephen Fowler. We, he recently passed away, so we appreciate the time he spent, he was very passionate about that. So I did go to, but I think it's kind of late, but I did go to the, an EV webinar with the TMA, and I mentioned to Ted that I would just give a, a brief of what the webinar was, but I think we can wait till next month on that. Also, just two things about the hazardous waste collection, which we are a part of, the borough and many municipalities are a part of, we, we pay money every year. The next, the next one will be locally, it will be August 14th at the tech school. And there are restrictions of what you can and cannot put there, but, um, again, that's, that's a free event. And then we have free electronics recycling, which happens Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 2:30. There are quite a few things that they accept, so please take advantage of that. Also, I'd like to know, oh, I'd like to say, I love our new railroad signs. We had two instances where the train was coming with, with no flares on the ground. And so I called the borough and, and John got, John later got right on that, and now we have actual railroad crossing signs at Delmore and Pennsylvania Avenue. The, I'm sorry, oh, the chief had sent something to us a while back, and it's been sitting there for months now. And it's the, it's Directive 225 as, as it relates to police empowerment program. And I'm just wondering, I had some questions, I, I sent them to the chief, he answered them. I'm just wondering, are, can we put this on the agenda for next month, or, or, or what do you think?
Sure. Send me an email so I remember.
Okay.
And CP Virginia, so it make, make sure it gets on the agenda.
Okay. I was, uh, sure, I was contacted by Susan Taylor, who is, who will be the outgoing director of the Friends of the Delaware Canal. She's been trying to retire for a couple of years. But next year, they're going to have the 40th anniversary of the Canal Festival, and I'd really like to see Morrisville, you know, be involved in it. We were a few years back, we actually sent, we set up areas next to the theater. We had tents and so forth. And we actually wanted to possibly have some canoes launching from there. But it's not happening until next year, but we're on their list of who they'll contact when the events start to take place. I think that's, oh, I know. We talked about roosters, I know Helen talked about it, and Bob just talked about it, I've mentioned it, there are regular calls. In looking at the, and Helen looked it up and said she didn't see anything about roosters in our animal ordinance. So I think we thought it was there, but it's ordinance number 889, and it mentions actually pot-bellied pigs, because that's really when we wrote it years ago, because we had problems with people had 300-pound pigs in their backyard. So I'd like to see that the ordinance committee, maybe, yeah, maybe we could get together and consider adding roosters to that or amendment, that roosters would not be allowed.
There's actually a bigger issue, because there was an ordinance that roosters were not allowed in town, and it disappeared. So somebody in the borough hall, or I don't know, has to look up what happened to the old ordinances. Well, it might, when we got codified, maybe it slipped.
I'm sorry, we checked them when we heard about the roosters, just to see, because we've had this issue in other municipalities, and they've, generally, they're not allowed.
Right. We, we had an ordinance that it was-
We can't speak to that.
I know.
When we looked at, didn't have it in there.
I understand.
Your ordinance can easily be amended to eliminate that.
Well, let me ask you, so when we were codified, and there were, there were a lot of other ordinances in there that the borough has passed throughout the years in order to make the town better, they're just gone? Is that, is that correct?
Obviously, I wasn't involved in codif, I don't, I can just say, I don't know what the previous ordinance had. I don't know. I don't have it. We haven't really looked at that. We just, we heard the question, we were concerned about it, we looked up the ordinance and it wasn't there. And we didn't, I didn't go into searching, you know, like what the history was. We just assumed it wasn't there. I was a little surprised.
No, it wasn't there till up to, I think, 2015. Virginia?
Yes.
Do you guys have copies of old ordinances, like before it was wiped off the website?
Yes, we have every one that was ever done.
Okay, you know what? Then I'll come down this week and I'll take a look at it.
If you, Helen, if you don't mind, if you send an email, you know, if there's others that you want also, it's easy, we could pull them. They're all right here. It's not a problem.
Okay. Yeah, I'll send you an email, tell you what day I'm coming so you know, you're aware.
Yes, that way we can pull them and have them ready for you. It's not a problem.
That'd be great.
Well, while we were talking about roosters, and again, I would think that it would be an amendment to the 889, which mentions animals in the borough, but it sort of talks about pets. Are we considering or willing to put a cap on how many chickens someone can have?
I think we should look at everything.
I mean, we allow chickens and I think that they should be allowed, but if it gets to a point where somebody has a dozen chickens, I think that might be-
Just like, just like we would kind of frown upon 20 cats in one household, you would-
Well, yeah, I don't know how you get around that, though.
I mean, they're, I don't know. That, yes.
You can regulate livestock. You have that authority.
Okay.
As long as you're reasonable and whatever, which you always are, yeah, there's no, you don't have a constitutional right to have like 400 chickens in your backyard. That is not a protective right.
Okay. I have one more thing, Mr. Parker. In January, February, we received, it was called a Model Alternative Energy Ordinance from the Bucks County Planning Commission. And I was hoping that when the ordinance committee might get together and we talk about roosters, we can talk about alternative energy using their model, which is really quite, it's lengthy and it's very comprehensive, but we can pluck some things from it possibly. And actually, that's all I have.
Anyone else?
I just have something really quick. David's Distillery just opened up right there on Bridge Street where 21 lochs was going to be. I don't know the name of that building. Does anybody know?
No, that hasn't been.
What was it before? It was the liquid, it was Liquid Air. Yeah, Lehigh, Lehigh Rubber. Lehigh Rubber Works. Very nice people. They made a fantastic dessert for us and I hope that people start going in there and partaking in our new businesses coming to town.
Agreed. It almost looks like a museum in there, right? Doesn't it have, no?
It's very nice in there. And the owners are extremely sweet.
All right. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
Something, wait, wait, I got something real quick before we adjourn. Many people in Marshall may have known him. He was a lifelong friend of mine and Steve Brooks, who I grew up in town with, he actually, he was a Marshall cop at one point, moved on. His father, Mr. Brooks, Herb Brooks, was a crossing guard for quite some time. Anyone in town that knows Mr. Brooks, he was just, he was a really, really great guy. He passed away this past Saturday. So please keep the Brooks family in your prayers.
Thank you, Scott, for that. We actually gave him accommodation, I believe, in this borough a number of years ago.
Yeah, he was really into veterans. I believe the service, I believe it's an online streaming service. I believe it's tomorrow at 4:30 if you check the J. Allen Hooper website. So tomorrow, tomorrow at 4:30. But again, let's keep the family. Steve, the son, Steve is a great guy and his daughter-in-law, Sue, Sue Brooks, they're awesome, awesome people and prayers would help. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else?